May I have your attention, please? At this time, we'll call the Tuesday, June 21st, 2011 Meeting of the Iredell County Board of Commissioners to order. And if you would, join us in prayer, please. Heavenly Father, we come to you tonight, and we thank you for the many blessings that are ours. Father, we thank you that you gave us the opportunity forward to practice self-government. But we can only govern ourselves collectively if we can first learn to govern ourselves individually. I pray that you would impress that upon our hearts, that we would live our lives in a way worthy to be called Americans, but worthy to be called your children. Father, I'd just like to take this opportunity to ask that you would send comfort to the O'Brien family, Father in Gaston County, who lost their son in Afghanistan. Father, they're good people, and we don't know why such things happen to good people. But we thank you for the life of that young man and the testimony that he led. And, Lord, we pray for his friend, Josh Cawthorn, who tonight is healing from severe wounds, and we pray you would heal him and comfort his family. Give this board guidance tonight. Give us wisdom and judgment. We ask in advance for forgiveness for our shortcomings, and we ask it in Christ's name. Amen. Let's, uh, do you want to send the Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of our country?
(audience cheering)
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
My parents. My parents.
Mr. Chairman, my daughter didn't want to bring my grandson tonight because she was afraid of this.[141.16][141.16](laughter) And I said, "No, I want my grandson here." So, if we can make it through the first few minutes, we'll be okay.
Mr. Mashburn, I think you've earned this privilege.
Thank you.
There's gonna be some that say that the IQ of the people sitting up here, the average IQ, just went up.[159.01][159.01](laughter)
Okay. Mr. Mashburn, if you're prepared, are there any adjustments to the agenda from the staff?
We do have one adjustment, Mr. Chairman. The first one is to amend the 2008 Mitchell Community College Student Service Building Capital Project, and that will be item number P, or letter P. Then you've got, uh, the next item is to call for a public hearing on Tuesday, July the 19th regarding an incentive agreement for an industrial prospect, and that will be item Q. Those are the two adjustments that we have. Thank you.
Yeah, that's good, honey. This evening, I'm gonna depart from our normal schedule a little bit, or, uh, the way we go here. If there are no exceptions, I'm gonna ask us to adopt a consent agenda this evening. We have a number of items before us, and some of them are housekeeping items where the money has already been voted to spend, and it came in under budget, requires no additional money, and some of them are just the acceptance of, uh, of fee schedules and so forth that, uh, are within the parameters that we have previously agreed upon. So if there's no exception, I would like to offer the following items on the consent agenda. And that would be the request from the Iredell State's Board of Education, item number C, for approval of a right-of-way. That would be item number G, requests from the Health Department for approval of the 2011-2012 fee policy and fee schedule. Item H is requests from the Parks and Recreation Department for the approval and acceptance of the Scott Rosenwald Parks and Recreation Trust Fund Parted Grant. Item I requests for approval of Budget Amendment Number 57 to recognize additional healthcare benefits fund revenue and to appropriate the health claim payments. Item J, uh, gentlemen, I'll be asking myself to recuse myself from that vote because of a conflict of interest. Item K is requests for approval of Budget Amendment Number 58 for $6,000 to recognize additional sales in jail commissary and to appropriate the commissary's supplies for inventory purchases. Item L, be requests for the renewal of a health services agreement with Southern Health Partners for the jail inmate care. My understanding, nothing's changed there. Requests from the Rural Center for Amendment to the Longitude 80 Building Renovation Contract. Item N, requests from the Tax Department for approval of the May 2011 refunds and releases. Item O, requests for the approval of June 2nd, 7th, and 9th, 2011 minutes. And item P is to amend the Mitchell Community College Capital Fund, and that would be so we could close out that project in advance of the close of our year. And item Q would be a call for a public hearing on June, excuse me, July 19th, 2011 at 7:00 PM regarding economic development incentive for an undisclosed company, based on investment of $3 million, up to $6,385,000. Without exception, I make a motion, we place those items on the consent agenda. If any commissioner...
To include J, can we go ahead and put that on the consent, or do we have to vote on that as a consent item without you?
I'm agreeable with that, if the minutes can show that I did not vote. Okay? All right? All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Okay? Thank you. At this time, we have under presentations of special recognitions and awards, we have a presentation of a retirement plaque and adoption of a resolution honoring the public service of Iredell County Manager Joel Mashburn. Mr. Mashburn, if you'd meet me out front, it'd be my pleasure to present to you this , sir.
(inaudible) Whereas Joel Mashburn, the King of 39 Years Career as County Manager, whereas Joel was appointed Wayne Field, North Carolina, in 1946, David Ray, and Ethel Thompson, and whereas in 1969, Joel graduated Western Carolina, first with bachelor's license, and in 1984 , he was more of a master's degree in public affairs, and whereas Joel honorably served the United States, on the United States Army, in Germany, and Vietnam, and whereas Joel, impressive county manager, three years serving as county manager, later in county of North Carolina, in 1975-79, the county municipal president of the county in 1979, in March of April, county municipal president of the county of South Carolina, in 1984-198. The Iredell County Manager, awarded 1988, to June of 2011. Whereas Joel provided professional, medical, fieldwork, and energy management, during 23 years in the county of Iredell, whereas today, Joel has long been serving county manager in Iredell County, which demonstrates his dedication to the county as well as his previous, um, effective and responsible leadership in county support, and his background in the general public. Whereas Iredell County has prospered growing, with the guys, who, Joel Mashburn, can be evidenced by county population, of 98,669, 98,800, 937,000, whereas Joel is a member of the International City County Management Association, whereas he is designated as a potential city manager, and also on the City County Management Association, plus he is a member of the board of directors and great state of local corporations, the South Iredell Community Development Corporation, as well as county of the local and city corporations, and by the way, truly great, as well as their home in Iredell County, as well as state and nation as well. And whereas Joel received Ole Miss High School, with the role of a long winged high, and lay for 2,000 years, with exemplary high standards and performance, both in the workplace as well as community. Whereas during Joel's career, he was a proud father and grandfather, served as sheriff and county manager, by both office positions, political, and social. Whereas Joel exemplifies the high standard and performance that is possibly expected of county manager, a second will be resolved in the Iredell County Board of Maintenance, expresses sheer appreciation for Joel Mashburn, and steadfast goal on trustworth service in Iredell County. Being personally resolved, that Joel Mashburn is often, often holds respect, admiration, and best wishes for a long and happy retirement, adopted this university day, in chief of 2011, Iredell County Board of Maintenance. It's a great pleasure. (applause)
First of all, I'll watch Amy come up here with me. And I'm not gonna ask my granddaughter, maybe my daughter, and her granddaughter, and come up to this, because I didn't follow their advice.[712.12][712.12](laughter) I just want to say how honored I am to have been able to serve as your county commissioner for twenty, uh, county manager, uh, county manager for twenty-two years. It's been an honor, it's been a privilege, and I have worked with some of the greatest commissioners that I think that we had in all of them. And what I really appreciate about them is they really have the best interest of the citizens of Iredell County at heart, and even though they may not always agree on everything that comes up, they have been true leaders in the county, and work with each other. And that has certainly been an inspiration to me as well. And again, I just want to thank you for allowing me the opportunity to serve as your county manager. Thank you.[776.12][776.12](applause)
Mr. Mashburn, if you'll see me before you leave, I'll be glad to sign that resolution if I fail to do so. I think if I do, it'll be worth a lot of money someday, I'm sure.
I hope so.[789.81][789.81](laughter) I'm counting on it.
Okay. At this time, we have appointments before the board. I want to remind the audience of a point of order. Under appointments before the board, comments by the person in appointment are limited to 15 minutes. And because of the length of the agenda this evening, that 15 minutes will be closely adhered to. So at this time, I would ask Mr. David Sides on behalf of Farm Bureau in recognition of Iredell County Manager Joel Mashburn.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You needn't worry about 15 minutes from me. But, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, and the man of our, retired county manager Joel Mashburn, we want to take this opportunity, the Board of Directors of Iredell County Farm Bureau voted at its last meeting to recognize you appropriately for your friendship to farming and the way you recognize agriculture in Iredell County. We very appreciate of that. And as President of Iredell County Farm Bureau, it is my honor to make this presentation. Before I do, I'll tell you I'm somewhat embarrassed. I only got this plaque this afternoon, and your name's misspelled.[863.12][863.12](laughter) And there's nothing more sacred to a man than his name. I understand that.
Well, I forgot what office I'm holding, so...[873.81][873.81](laughter)
Well, in defense, let me say that we ordered it from the Farm Bureau office in Raleigh, and you know when things go to Raleigh, they don't always happen, come back like you expected.[886.41][886.41](laughter) And this is one of those occasions. But I will, I'm gonna read the plaque, but I'm not gonna give it to you. I'm gonna take it, get it corrected, and get it to you some way. And it simply says, "Tribute Appreciation to Joel Mashburn in recognition of 23 years of dedicated service to citizens of Iredell County, presented by the Iredell County Farm Bureau this day, June 21st, 2011." And our prayer is, our thanks to you, and our prayer that you will enjoy your retirement. Thank you very much.
Thank you.[917.00][917.00](applause)
Thank you, Mr. Sides. Next, we have a presentation for the Council on Aging from Executive Director Anna Rice on the Fiscal Year 2012 Home and Community Care Block Grant Funding Plan. Ms. Rice, glad to have you with us.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and members of the board. Given the momentous occasion on the retirement of the county manager, you might think I'm here this evening to extend a special invitation to you, Mr. Mashburn, to join the Council on Aging.[950.91][950.91](laughter) And we would welcome you. In all seriousness, we join the community in wishing you only the best in your retirement as you enter a new phase of life, and we hope to see you down on our heels sometime soon. To the business at hand, I really am here this evening to present Iredell's 2012 Aging Funding Plan for your review and consideration. As I usually do, I'd like to take just a few moments to talk about the aging population in Iredell. Our 60-plus population now exceeds 27,000 and continues to show significant growth. The first of the baby boomers, those born in 1949 and 1950, are now in their early 60s and are eligible for aging services. Meanwhile, on the other end of the spectrum, the frail elderly, those age 85 and over, are the fastest-growing segment of the aging population. Our country, like the entire state, and I dare say the nation, faces the challenge of providing services to both groups. The young old, as they age and become more vulnerable, and the frail elderly, who want to remain in their homes and in their communities. What does this mean for Iredell County? This means the Council on Aging needs to continue providing a range of services along the continuum of care, adjusting to the new attitudes of our baby boomers who are demanding services while keeping our frail elderly in their home as long as it is safe to do so. With the 2012 Aging Funding Plan, the Council on Aging proposes to continue providing vital services such as transportation to medical appointments, as well as the grocery store or the drugstore. We'll help the 88-year-old woman living at Stakesville's Kings Grand or at the Mooresville Manor stay in her apartment by providing Level One chore services once a week, helping her maintain a clean and safe environment for her to live independently. We'll help the 64-year-old daughter take care of her 85-year-old mother who lives with her. Her mother, who suffers from Alzheimer's, cannot be left alone, and yet this 24/7 labor of love is taking its toll on her caregiver daughter. Council on Aging respite services mean this dutiful daughter can leave the house once or twice a week to get groceries and run errands, or just take a break from the constant demands of caregiving. We'll continue providing nutrition services, offering congregant meals in Mooresville, Troutman, Stakesville, and Harmony. We'll provide a gathering place for these seniors to enjoy a balanced meal and that all-important social contact and interaction on a daily basis. For those too frail to live home, volunteers will deliver a meal to the lone, isolated senior who just may appreciate that vital human contact more than the meal. Or perhaps that volunteer will discover the older adult who is confused and unable to communicate and on the verge of a diabetic coma, just in the nick of time to avert a more serious crisis. And for seniors needing a variety of service, we'll continue providing countless opportunities at the Council on Aging's Iredell and South Iredell Senior Centers, both certified by the state as Centers of Excellence. Programs and activities can include everything from helping decipher Medicare Part D or cutting through the whole Medicare maze, to choose a supplemental policy. It could be learning to use a computer to stay in touch with distant family via email, or taking a driver's refresher course to improve driving skills. It could be Tai Chi to improve balance and prevent falls, or it could be in cooperation with Cooperative Extension, providing the chronic disease self-management class to more effectively deal with any range of chronic illnesses. Or it could even be water exercise to combat stiff joints and limited mobility caused by rheumatoid arthritis. And finally, it could be chess or any number of card games that require focus and attention, keeping the mind active and engaged. All of these services along the continuum of care are available through the Older Americans Act, which is funded through the Home and Community Care Block Grant. Iredell's Home and Community Block Grant Committee met recently to consider the Fiscal Year 2012 Aging Funding Plan. The process was extended much, much later than ever before because of delayed target allocations from the state. The funding plan you have is an interim allocation that the Division of Aging released to prevent the disruption of services. Because of the uncertainty of federal and state funds, the block grant funding could stay the same as you have in your proposal, it could increase, or it could decrease. Any changes would be handled through the usual revision process once actual allocations are received after July 1st. As you may recall, Older Americans Act dollars, Home and Community Block Grant monies, require a minimum 10% local match. The county has helped the COA meet this requirement, and doing so brings back $9 in federal funds for every dollar contributed by the county, and we appreciate this vital support. I would be glad to answer any questions you might have about the Fiscal Year 2012 Aging Funding Plan, and I would appreciate your consideration in approving the proposed plan for the next fiscal year.
Okay. The request before you is an improvement of this block grant funding plan. Are there any questions of Ms. Rice? If not, floor's open for a motion.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve from Mr. Norman. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Rice. Yes, ma'am. Next, we have a presentation by Ann Simmons in recognition of the Family Consumer Sciences 100th Anniversary. Ms. Simmons?
Thank you.
Welcome.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, and Mr. Mashburn. We have a place for you at Cooperative Extension. 2011 marks 100 years of Family and Consumer Sciences in North Carolina. Family and Consumer Sciences roots are in the home demonstration movement that began in our state in 1911, under the direction of Jane S. McKimmern, the first home demonstration agent hired by North Carolina State University. Under McKimmern's leadership, young women came together in what were known as tomato clubs. In these clubs, they were taught housewifely arts, such as how to can tomatoes and how to make good use of products grown on the farm. Communities were made better as agents and rural women worked to bring public libraries to counties, get lines painted on roadways, and start hot lunch programs in the public schools. Today, we continue in the tradition of home demonstration, even though the names have changed. Home demonstration agents are now known as Family and Consumer Sciences agents, and home demonstration clubs are now collectively known as the Extension and Community Association. In each of North Carolina's 100 counties and Cherokee Reservation, you will find a Family and Consumer Sciences agent and Extension and Community Association members partnered to strengthen families and communities, both urban and rural. We do this by providing research-based education and information in the areas of nutrition, food safety, parenting, childcare, healthy aging, and family resource management. We also take wellness programs and staff training to businesses and other organizations. FCS programs address three issues of importance to all of us, the economy, education, and health. We've chosen to use the 100-year anniversary to share our accomplishments by presenting you with your personal copy of Ordinary Women: Extraordinary Service, and we do have some men working with us, too. The North Carolina Family and Consumer Sciences Foundation and the Extension and Community Association partnered to put together this book that tells the story of Family and Consumer Sciences in North Carolina and Iredell County. The book and the brochures in the folder were produced with private funds. They were made possible through the generous donations of businesses and individuals throughout North Carolina and Iredell County. We hope that you'll enjoy reading about the past and present accomplishments of Family and Consumer Sciences. We thank you for your generous support of Family and Consumer Sciences and all extension programs in Iredell County.
Next, we have Mr. James Sattlemeyer regarding the valuation of an automobile in a recent hearing with the Board of Equalization and Review. Mr. Sattlemeyer, if you'd come forward, please.
I'd like to thank all you people for the fine people you got together during this meeting of this board up there. I went to the meeting, two years ago, I took a bill up to the tax office, to Martha, whatever her name is, showed them my car had been wrecked, at which time she tells me that even since I've had my car fixed for tax purposes, I still have a new car. I go into this meeting, and I have never been as such in front of arrogant people in all my life and being treated like a second-rate citizen. I talked to this board, I explained to them about my car being wrecked, I took and passed the paper around to each and everyone in committee, your Steve Irvin, Martha from the tax department was up there, they looked at this stuff, and what got me, and I hate to say this, since I haven't got nothing, there was one guy in the meeting, his vocabulary was very limited. All he could say was hearsay, hearsay. I got so tired of hearing that, I thought I was gonna fall out of my seat. So what I'm saying tonight might be hearsay, too, because the minutes of your meeting didn't put any of this stuff into the minutes, even though you had somebody sitting there writing these minutes the whole time I was there. Plus, Lieutenant, somebody from Sheriff's Department, she was up there, and I got the thing here, but I went back up there on a Thursday, and Mr. Mashburn over, I sent him an email. And to the effects of this email, I put Joel. I received a registered letter Friday. I went up there on a Thursday and asked for the minutes of the meeting. Steve Irvin, he tried to tell me that these minutes wasn't approved, dot, 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 I couldn't get them. But I received this registered letter through Steve Irvin Friday. I had to sign for it. Here is the letter, if you want to look at it, with the minutes of the meeting. These minutes was edited so bad that regardless of what I could tell you went on in the meeting, we'll hear that one brother dude say, "Hearsay again." I got so tired that I wanted to throw up. And the deal is this, my car, I was a nice car, I bought a nice car. The first year my tax value on this car, 2009, was $22,290. Right here's a statement from TEC Data Systems and Corporation, if you'd like to look at it. The second year, my car dropped down to $18,900, roughly $4,000 valuation. This past year, my car dropped to $18,600, a value drop of $360. I questioned this stuff, and I talked to somebody I really think told me the truth, that y'all's paying software is crooked. I don't care who likes it, who don't like it. I sent an email to each one of you people in this commission, and never did I get a reply from anybody stating a fact about what's going on in this car. Mr. Joel Mashburn sitting over younger, I emailed him. To this point here, I received a registered letter today, February, May the 27th. The minutes of the meeting were greatly edited. I asked for all the minutes not... I asked for all the minutes, not part of them. If this is the way Steve Irvin does his job, then I want to know who I need to check with. I am a taxpayer, and I think these minutes should be mine to read. Also, I talked to the newspaper. They want some information, and they said they can't use hearsay. But since your whoever wrote these minutes put in just what little bit they wanted to hear to the favor of this commission, the tax people, whoever. I get this reply back from Joel Mashburn over there. Boy, from Joel Mashburn, subject are you minutes, I think you remember the subject, sir. It says, "To the best of my knowledge, it is not required that minutes be a verbatim transcript from the discussions of an official meeting, but must record any actions taken by a board, commission, or committee. If a recording of the meeting was taken, which is not required, then recording could be considered a public document, and you should be able to request a copy of the recording under the Freedom of Information Act." I need these minutes because I'm going to go a little bit further with this discussion about these taxes, the way y'all use this software to figure my car. If you could tell me my first year's car dropped $12,000, and in my last year it dropped $310, y'all people must be broken. You think we, the citizens, are a bunch of idiots. I am tired of being just told, "There it is, pay it, like it." And I think if all ladies read the email I sent to you, and I got a copy of it, it has to, it's going in the shop paper for much longer. Plus, I'm trying to get Channel 9 News to do a follow-up on this to see what kind of government we have in this state or county that can tell me in one year, my car lost $310 value for its taxes. My taxes dropped $4 from last year to this year. And if you people need money at the badge, you need to start robbing banks. That's all I got to say. But I want to tell you this: I was the most arrogant, ignorant bunch of people I ever talked to, because one guy in the committee, he started laughing and made a comment about my car, how much it had dropped in one year. He thought it was funny. And if that's the best kind of people y'all can get to have a hearing, y'all are doing a sorry job. Because I'm going to tell you what, I'm not a second-rate citizen, and for that guy, only thing about it, I can't prove what his name was, because I didn't keep it. And your minutes sure didn't take and take. He even referred to the damn jokes and stuff that these people made about my car and the taxes. But yet, they treated my car, I want to tell you this, and this is what gets me more than anything. The statement was made to me per Martha, what's-her-face, and Steve Irvin, that as long as my car had been repaired, I still had a new car for tax valuation. The day I wrecked my car, I tried to trade it, because I was proud of my car, and I still proud of it. And you won't believe the value that dropped on that car, just because I put a little skin place on the hood, there was no bodywork. All it was was painting and sanding it, $1,400. And your people tells me I got a new car for tax purposes. And if that's the way it is, I hate to say it. You ain't too much people. You sure can't be looking after the citizens at this time.
This time, we'll call the meeting into public hearing in consideration of an economic development incentive for an undisclosed company. Mr. Robbie Carney, if you'd come forth, please, sir. Welcome, Mr. Carney.
Thank you. Thank you very much. I'd like to take a quick moment and first start off by thanking Mr. Mashburn for his many years of service that he's given to both the SICDC and the MSIADC. I can honestly say that our organizations would not have seen the success and be what they are today without his leadership. So we definitely do appreciate it from the behalf of both of our organizations. I do appreciate it. Mr. Chairman, Commissioners of Iredell County, I first want to thank you for your time and consideration this evening. I'm here tonight representing Project Niagara and joined by the leadership of Niagara Bottling Company. Niagara Bottling is the largest family-owned water manufacturing operation in the country. Established in 1963, they currently own and operate nine manufacturing facilities around the U.S. Over the past year, they have been working through the site selection process to determine the best location for their 10th manufacturing facility. This community, both private and public sectors have been working extremely hard to make this project a reality. It is with great pleasure that I inform this board that Niagara has tentatively selected Iredell County and Mooresville as its 10th location. For this project, the company plans to locate within the Mooresville Business Park's remaining 83-acre site. For Phase 1, they would invest $10 million to construct a 300,000-square-foot manufacturing facility, and $35 million in new machinery and equipment. This project would create 66 full-time jobs, paying average wages of $40,000 per year. Niagara Bottling has also stated possible Phase 2 expansion to take place that would include an additional $20 million investment in machinery and equipment, and that phase would create an additional 26 jobs. With the struggles of our recent economy, we are very pleased to see that this company potentially creating over 90 full-time manufacturing jobs in a time when it's extremely needed. In accordance to the Iredell County Industrial Development Incentive Program, we're requesting that incentive be granted for Niagara Bottling for 80% increased tax value paid back for a period of six years for both Phase 1 and Phase 2 expansions. Based on a $45 million investment, the incentive grant for Phase 1 amounts to $160,200, paid for six years, totaling $961,200. Based on a $20 million investment, the incentive grant requested for Phase 2 amounts to $71,200, paid for six years, totaling $427,200. I'd like to thank you again for the time and opportunity this evening, and at this point in time, we're happy to answer any questions that you may have regarding this project.
Mr. Carney, I'd just like to point out, there's some folks in the room this evening who I haven't seen here before, and I want to help them understand, these folks are not going to walk out of here with a check tonight for $961,000. They're going to make an investment, enter into a contractual agreement with this county. They're going to be corporate citizens paying taxes before any of these incentives are given to them.
Yes, sir. That's absolutely correct.
Okay. All right. Any other questions of Mr. Carney? This is a public hearing, ladies and gentlemen. Does anyone else here like to speak in regard to this issue? If so, you can come forward at your pleasure and speak. All right. Hearing none, I declare this public hearing closed, and the floor is open for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to make the motion that we approve a $961,200 incentive over a six-year period based upon a $45 million investment, as well as the $427,200 incentive over a six-year period based upon the $20 million investment.
Motion for approval of this request of Mr. Robertson. Is there any discussion on that motion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Carney. Say thanks to the Niagara folks here. We appreciate the confidence she's shown in us.
Welcome, neighbor.
Okay, we will move to administrative matters, and the first item on the agenda this evening is request for adoption of the fiscal year 2011, 2012 Iredell County Budget Ordinance. At this time, I will afford any commissioner any opportunity they'd like to say. If nobody wants to say anything, the floor is open for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to make a statement.
Yes, ma'am. It's your pleasure.
Thank you. I'd like to tell the board and the county that I have learned many things this year. One thing that I've learned is it's much easier to be on that side of the rail than it is on this side. And I respect the commissioners that are here on this board. I respect the county employees and the job that they do, and I respect the hard-working taxpayers. I have said publicly, and I campaigned, that I would not vote for a tax increase, and so tonight, I will be voting no on the budget. I am not voting no to fulfill a campaign obligation or to fulfill what I said publicly, but I am voting no because I fundamentally believe that increasing taxes of any kind is not the way that you generate revenue. I do not believe that people work to pay their taxes. I believe that people work for the portion that's left over after the taxes are paid. And what we make more attractive, people will do more of, and what we make less attractive, they will do less of. And when property taxes go up, that makes homeownership, for some, less attractive. I am not a proponent of zero government. There is a place and a need for government. What I believe the citizens would like to see out of the government is that we do the least amount of damage, collect the necessary revenue, and provide the essential services that we must provide for our citizens. If we look at the situation across our country, we see that foreclosures, home foreclosures, there's one in 45 homes are being foreclosed. If you factor in the real jobless rate, when you take out the people who have stopped looking for jobs, the jobless rate is about 17%. And the mountain of debt is breathtaking. And this will continue to place an unprecedented burden on the economy. We expect the federal and state government to reduce spending, and I believe the citizens of the county expect us to do the same. And, you know, we ask a lot of questions, and sometimes we think the answers are always the same. I want to share a personal story. My son CJ is four, but when he was three, we had an interesting conversation in the bedroom. He said to me, "Mama, why do my words go in my ears?" And I said, "Well, buddy, when you speak, your ears hear what your mouth says." And so I said, "What part of you hears?" And he said, "My ears." And I thought, "He's brilliant. I know what all these answers are, but this is a brilliant little boy." And I said, "What part of you taste?" And he says, "My mouth." And then I said to him, "Well, what part of you smells?" And he said, "My bottom." Now, I used that because I was expecting for my little boy to say, "My nose." And a lot of times, we ask questions, and we think we already know the answers. I think we're in a time when the answers need to be different than what we have heard in the past. And so, I want to say that my vote tonight, no, is not a Republican, Democrat, or Independent thing. It's not a conservative, liberal, or Tea Party. But my vote tonight, I feel, is a common sense economics vote to no on the budget and no on a property tax increase. I do respect the gentlemen that sit next to me, and after the vote is over, regardless of where it stands, they have my firm commitment that I will work with them, and work with the county, and work with the taxpayers, to do the best job with the revenue that we have been given. So I appreciate your confidence that you, the employees, and the taxpayers have placed in this board. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, ma'am. If I could, I would like to address the 2011-2012 budget. In order to understand this budget, I think a history of the county budget is in order. The original proposed budget for 2008, 2009, at the conclusion of this budget, which would be four years old, the proposed budget was $169,612,400. The revised budget wound up being $165,400,000. As you can recall, in September '08, the real trouble started. The housing market collapsed, huge layoffs took place, the economy went into rapid decline. This Board of Commissioners took immediate action. The staff was directed to make cuts. In March 2009, the Board of Commissioners at our winter planning retreat made further cuts. One motion by me, and approved unanimously by the board, cut nearly $1.4 million from the budget on an annualized basis. That was a difficult thing to do, because it meant that some people were going to lose their jobs. But we were bleeding cash, and swift action had to be taken. Historically, fund balance has been appropriated but not spent. This is done by employing a static revenue model as compared to a dynamic model. But by the spring of 2009, the dynamics of the economy were gone. Fund balance was used for the first time in my tenure on the board, to any measurable degree. In 2009 and 2011, or 2009, 2010, and 2010, 11, the board continued to make cuts. The situation worsened as the state began to shift costs and withheld money they owed counties. In 2010 and 11, states withheld $285,900 that they owed us in beer and wine taxes. Funding of intensive probation officers were shifted to the counties. They discontinued the reimbursements for sentenced inmates. Inmates that were sentenced to the penal system in the state, they did not take. We had to house those prisoners, and they no longer paid us for doing so. The state raised the county's contribution to the local employees' pension fund, which we have no control over. It is set in Raleigh. They shifted those costs back to the county at a sum of $427,578. And this year, the fund again increased the county budget by $154,900, changing it in workman's compensation. No action by taken by this board necessitated this, but workman compensation legislation added $438,000 in unemployment compensation cost. Unemployment compensation cost amounted to $340,000. Jail medical costs. One prisoner in particular that the state did not take, they did not take him because he was ill. That one prisoner cost us well over $100,000. Those medical costs over the term of that year were better than $160,000. Fuel costs in that year amounted to an increase of $348,195. I know that everyone is paying higher fuel costs, but we don't have an option when someone dials 911, that ambulance must go. Continued lower economic activity coupled with cost shifting from Raleigh have brought us to this point. For many years in this hall, I have warned people that North Carolina was becoming like states in the Northeast, where property tax may be someday set in the state and not in the county seat. Could additional cuts have been made in this budget? Doubtlessly. But not enough cuts were offered in the process to come close to a rate of 44 and a half cents. Therefore, I will support a rate of 48 and a half cents, primarily because it shields against future drawdowns of the fund balance. I did not promise, for the first time in running for election or reelection as a county commissioner this time, I did not promise I would not raise the tax rate. If you have carefully monitored the county budget for the last three years, you would have known this day was inevitable. The amount of the increase, when it would happen, could be considered to be in somewhat of a flux. But if present trends continued, in my estimation, it was inevitable. I do not say this boastfully, but I really believe there are probably two people in this room who know this budget better than Steve Johnson, and that's Joel Mashburn and Susan Blumenthal. Sometimes I spend more, this time of year, I spend more time with the county budget than I do my wife. I said that this budget must do four things. It must maintain, be maintainable for 12 months. We cannot change the tax rate in mid-year. It must not deplete further the county fund balance. It must also be maintainable for more than one budget cycle. If we come back and we go through these deliberations again, people will lose confidence in us. Also, it must be able to support the county's fund for at least some period of time till we can gather, get together and make budget corrections, should another economic downturn occur. That was my main driving philosophy as I approached this budget. I despise higher taxes like anyone else, but I also have a fiduciary responsibility to make sure that this county is financially stable. In the process of doing so, it may cost me some friends, but I signed on for the job. I am fearful, as I stated at the last meeting, that a second economic downturn is very likely. I believe- I believe so for the following reasons. The stimulus is practically over, its benefit was slight and short-lived. The Fed has already said that its quantitative easing will end next month. There are no proposed fiscal policy on the tax side that would do anything to stimulate the economy. Therefore, I believe that a second drop in housing prices and another slump in the economy is likely. We had better have a fund balance. We're going to need it. Now, let me, let me say this. In over sixteen years as a county commissioner, I have never been criticized like I've been criticized in the last month. And sometimes, honest to goodness, it hurt. Because the people who offered the most severe criticism did not always know what they were talking about. Winston Churchill said, "If a man is not liberal by the time he's twenty, he lacks a heart. If he's not conservative by the time he likes, by the time he's thirty, he lacks a brain." Make your own judgment, I do not recall a time when I was ever liberal. At the age of ten, I sat with my grandpa. He demanded I call him Frank on the couch when LBJ signed the legislation for the Great Society. And he said, "Son, do you know what you just saw?" I said, "No, sir." He said, "I'm afraid you saw the beginning of the end. When they can take directly the fruits of the labors of one man and give it to someone who did not earn it, it cannot last long." I recall that I've worked in several conservative campaigns, and for sixteen years I've sat here, and I've pointed out wasteful spending. One discovery that I have made is good people like accountability, incompetent unethical people despise it. I have done so, and having done so, I've been called everything but a Christian. I've been called a racist, bigot, child hater. I've been lied about, I've been lied to. My wife and daughter, in my absence, have been criticized in restaurants. My daughter, not by the news media, but in the news media, has been personally attacked because I chose to educate her in Christian school the way that I felt was necessary. I am not bitter. Bitterness is like taking poison, waiting for the other guy to get sick. It is foolish to do so. But many times during those times, I sit here getting hammered on in this very hall, and I looked on the political horizon, hoping help would show up. They did, but oftentimes, they were too few a number, and many times, too late. I admire the Tea Party movement. My heart is with them to a great degree. I do not seek to anger you by this question, but I must ask it. Where have you been? Alexis Tocqueville came to this country and studied this country in 1854. He made a comment, "America shall remain great until the people learn that they can vote for themselves from the public treasury, bar jess." I am fearful that too many of our countrymen have learned that, that they increasingly vote for the person who will give them the most of what someone else has earned. I am fearful that we are too late. I pray that it's not. I will vote for this budget with great reluctance, not because I like it, but because I feel I have a sense of duty. And I think that in the long-term financial consideration of this county, it is the best action to take under economic circumstances. Thank you very much.
Floor is open for a motion.
Motion to approve the budget.
Motion from Vice Chairman Norman to approve the budget. Any further discussion? Not all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed?
No.
Budget passes four-one. I'd like to thank the staff, and I'd like to thank for my fellow commissioners for all the hard work they put in, in seventeen budgets. This is by far the most difficult, and I do appreciate everybody's contribution.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
We appreciate your leadership. This, you know, I've only had six, six budgets. Mr. Norman's had more than that. Mr. Mitchell has had almost, I don't know that many county, but you had, you had several in Raleigh, which are pretty, pretty difficult as well. Renee, this was your first, first go around, first go around? It's, we never know as much as we thought we knew when we walked in. Okay? That doesn't include the CD-ROM full of support documents.
I would like, if I could, Mr. Robertson, not as a matter of apology. Much has been said about the legislature and the budget cuts that they've made, and I appreciate those. The fact is, their budget is $700 million more than it was three years ago. In the budget we sit in tonight, not the one just approved, but the budget we continue to operate in, your county budget is $15 million less than it was in 2008. We have been cutting, ladies and gentlemen. Washington and Raleigh have not. Raleigh just started cutting, but we have been cutting. So let's, no further comments, let's move along. Okay, we have a request, this item I did not-
I was going to say, thanks for your leadership.
Yes, sir.
A request from the Iredale County Arts Council for a decision regarding an extension to the old jail building lease. Is the lady here? Did you say you saw her, Ms. Griffiths?
I'm here, Tony.
Okay. If you'd come forward, please, ma'am. Yes, ma'am, welcome back.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, I didn't know, was I supposed to present something to you?
Yeah, I believe it's the last time y'all, the last discussion on this, is that you did not wish to look at a longer term than five years.
Yeah.
But you wanted some time to think about that. So really, what's before you now is agreeing to a lease with them, and based on your previous discussions, probably a five-year lease.
Well, I apologize, Mr. Mashburn, I have not read this lease. I have been otherwise disposed, as you can imagine. But is it the term of the lease is for five years, and there's what is presented?
That's what, I mean, that's what you, if you elected to be five years, then that's the way the final lease will read, and, and what will be signed will be a five-year lease. All the other terms will be the same.
Okay. Okay.
Let me ask Mr. Mashburn a question.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Mashburn, I was looking at the old jail the other day, I was parked across the street and looking at it. That is a very beautiful building, but there are two trees in front of it, and you can't see the building.
Well, there's also a couple in front of this one, you can't see the building, but...
But I was sitting there looking at some of the ornamental work on there, and it looked like it's got IC, I guess for Iredale County, and I was having to look through the leaves. And I, I don't know, I'm not exactly a tree hugger, but I believe if they were down, we had some little shrubbery there, it'd look a whole lot better for that building. I don't know.
There's this, it says county jail in the old spelling, and then if you, if you cut those crepe myrtles back a little, you can still see that. And it says CJ for county jail. I know what you're talking about with those ornamental things. It is beautiful.
I like trees, but I believe that building is so unique, I believe people need to see it.
Coming straight from Walnut Street is a beautiful view. But I'm sorry, I didn't think I was supposed to present anything tonight, I was just coming to-
You're right, I did not, I'm sorry if I caught you off guard or embarrassed you.
Oh, no, it's fine. It's fine.
But I think it's the consensus of this Board, ma'am, that we limit the term of the lease for five years.
Okay.
Okay, so I'm going to entertain a motion to that effect. That's the feeling I got from the Board. So if someone's willing to offer a motion, we'll entertain a motion to that effect.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we adopt a lease for five years.
Okay. Motion to enter, a motion to enter into a lease agreement with these folks for five years. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you very much.
Yes, ma'am, thank you. And again, I apologize. We have item D, I guess, is the next item I have that is not on the consent agenda, and that's a request from the Health Department for approval of budget amendment number fifty-six in the amount of $270,500 to fund an imaging project.
We're here again tonight to request approval for a budget amendment to fund an imaging project for our medical records. As you might remember, we came before you at the May third meeting with this request in combination with a request for approval of the vendors. At that time, you chose not to approve our request, stating that you wanted more recent bids for the project, and I understand your position on that. Tonight, we have divided our request. The portion that I'm presenting to you now is just for the budget amendment itself, to use Medicaid Max funds for the project. Dean Lael, our county purchasing agent, will be presenting a request for approval of the vendors. So our budget amendment request tonight is in the amount of $270,500. And as you can see on your memo, $203,650 will be used for scanning and indexing of the records, and we will only do the most current five years of records, as recommended by Mr. Mashburn. $49,700 will be to purchase an upgrade for Laserfish software that will be used to access and, and look at these records. And then $10,400 will be used to purchase additional hard drives and servers and processors that will be needed to support the software. And then there will be an ongoing $6,750 expense for support and maintenance of the Laserfish software. I can answer questions, I'll try to answer questions if you have them. I'm not going to go into any more detail at this point, because I went over it the last time I was here.
Okay. Any questions, Mr. Johnson?
Mr. Chair, I don't have a question, I have a comment. I did a little bit of research, and the proposal that this company has put together, the standard industry is four to eight cents per keystroke, and this company has put in at 4.3 cents per keystroke, and I appreciate the effort the ladies did to find a company that would be at the lower end of the standard, the industry standard. So I appreciate that very much.
Can I assume that's a motion for approval?
I will make the motion. Yes, sir.
All right. Motion by Ms. Griffiths for approval. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Lael?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, and members of the Board. As noted in the previous discussion, Health Department does want to start the imaging portion of their project. The total of the budget, as you said, was $270,500. There's no single vendor that can provide this entire service, so we do have to break this down into three different types of procurement processes. As noted in your copy of the memo, the largest cost portion is for the scanning and imaging portion of this. It's estimated $203,700. While I was reviewing the project and the propositional information the Health Department sent me, we also discovered that Lincoln County has recently conducted a formally proposed, formal proposal process, and their Board did award a formal contract based on that formal process. Since our ordinance does require me to look first for and consider all opportunities for a piggyback purchase, as outlined in North Carolina General Statute, I did look at this Lincoln County Award very closely, the bid process, the bid package, the contract, and everything. Basically, just to summarize the piggyback procedure, it basically allows the Board to award a contract to any vendor who has, within the last year, been awarded a contract by another government entity that followed a similar formal procedure as required by North Carolina General Statute. After reviewing the Lincoln County contract, I spoke at length to the purchasing agent. I found they did follow the formal bid requirements, their Board did award the contract on January the 30th of 2011. This makes this particular contract eligible for piggyback, if you so choose. As was previously mentioned, Advanced Imaging Systems did bid 4.3 cents per scanned image, as opposed to the next low bidder of 4.6 cents per scanned image. All of the other services were rated about the same type of difference. Lincoln County did report that they're extremely pleased with Advanced Imaging Service. Advanced Imaging is offering the county a one-year contract based on the same terms and costs as the Lincoln County contract. They further will extend those services to other county, or, excuse me, other county departments that may need those services on as needed basis. I'd also like to mention that Lincoln County Purchasing Agent stated that they had an opportunity to piggyback off of a Charlotte bid that was done in 2010. They decided to go to formal bid. Their bid process turned out the same cost, same terms, as was awarded in the Charlotte, the earlier Charlotte County. Advanced Imaging was also a low bidder in that situation. We do recommend that the Board consider piggybacking the Lincoln County contract, and we request that the award for the HD imaging contract, the Health Department imaging contract, be made to Advanced Imaging, under the same terms and conditions as the Lincoln County contract. In addition, I'm requesting that the Board also make the award so as to allow the county departments to be able to use those services on an as-needed basis for the next year.
Okay. Any question, Mr. Lael? Not all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Lael. And I believe you have another item here.
Yes, sir. The next item is concerning the Laserfish software portion of the project. As noted, it is $49,700. The current version that the Health Department has was bought in 2010 in conjunction with Electronic Records Management System the Board approved in that year also. That version needs to be upgraded to be able to handle the full weight of the imaging project, and OneSource Solutions, the original vendor, who currently supports the project, offered a proposal for the upgrade. Their proposal offers a credit of $5,300, because the, the new software upgrade will be purchased so close to the old, which will more than offset the actual $5,000 of the upgraded Laserfish software. While the bidding process is possible, Laserfish does require that only resellers who are certified as partners for the reseller project, we have one reseller in North Carolina, and that is OneSource Document Solutions. In looking through other vendors, we did find two additional. While waiting for the, for this particular agenda, Health Department went and requested some additional quotes from some of the out-of-state vendors. Two vendors did provide bids or quotes. One Unity Business Systems, out of Virginia, submitted a quote of $55,762.50. New Age Systems, also from Virginia, submitted a quote of $61,825. Basically, OneSource is still the lowest-cost vendor. Therefore, we are requesting that the Board allow an award of the software upgrade to OneSource Document Solutions. This request is actually slightly different from my original memo because of the two additional bids that were received. My original request basically was a type of a sole-source request. In the light of the new bids, we don't really need a sole source.
Okay. Any question, Mr. Lael? If not, floor is open for a motion. Mr. Chairman, I move for approval of a contract with OneSource Document Solutions for the Laserfish software upgrade for $49,700. Okay. Motion for approval for Mr. Mitchell. Any discussion? Here are none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. I believe that brings us down to our consent agenda. So the floor is open for a motion for approval of all items on the-
We did that. Did we? Yeah. Started the meeting. We started with-
I put them on there, did we? Did we approve them?
We excluded you from voting on one.
Good, okay. Good.
Okay.
Man, we rocking along here. I'm sorry. Okay, announcements of vacancies occurring on-
We didn't do L.
Pardon?
We didn't do L.
L.
So was that in the consent? I didn't mark it, maybe it was.
Yeah.
It was, okay.
Okay. Announcements of vacancies occurring on boards and commissions. Announcements of vacancies occurring on boards and commissions? There's none, okay. Appointments to boards and commissions? Juvenile Crime Prevention Council, a memorandum twenty-one? We have five appointments. Following people have agreed to reappointments. Marvin Norman, Angela Williams, Laura Willard, yes, Tom Kurtz, and Bill Parker, or Steve... I move we reappoint these folks by acclamation. There are no further nominees. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. At this point, I know we have three planning board appointments.
Mr. Chairman, we were going to talk about reducing the size of the board.
Yeah.
Can we, can we wait until we-
I was going to suggest we postpone this. Okay. So, Chris Robertson, I'm going to take that as a motion to postpone appointment.
It is.
Okay. All in favor of Mr. Robertson's motion for postponement, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Have the Troutman Town Board of Adjustment. We have two nominees here, or two potential nominees, Graham Mullis and Michael Todd.
Chairman, I'm going to nominate those two.
Okay. We have a... Motion for Mr. Mitchell and Graham Mullis and Michael Todd. If there are no further nominations, I move we close the Florida nominations. Point these two by acclamation. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Adult Care Home Community Advisory Committee, one appointment. I move we postpone this appointment. Unfinished business. Public comment period. I believe we had a couple of signees. We had Mr. Rick Dusenberry and Mr. Mark Hager. Mr. Dusenberry's in the rear here. If you'd come forward, sir.
She said that Hager guy left.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, Honorable Commissioners, Mr. Mashburn, I'm a citizen in Morzil and also a commissioner on the Morzil Town Board. I would like to thank you for everything that you've done for the County of Iredell as a citizen and also as a board member. As you know, we just went through our budget. It's not a soft endeavor. There are major choices and tough choices to be made, but I just wanted to tell you on, well, as a commissioner, I'm looking forward to our two boards working collectively together in the coming months to try and see where we can cooperate with each other to save the taxpayers even more money. And I think I can speak for my board in that we're all looking for every avenue that we can possibly take to go down that road. But as a citizen, I just want to thank you for the hard work that you're doing. It's a tough job. A lot of people don't understand how tough it is, and you make tough decisions. And, Mr. Mashburn, good luck in your retirement. Thank you for your service. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Dusenberry. Any new business? Mr. Mashburn, do you have a report for us?
Mr. Chairman, in accordance with the budget ordinance, county manager is authorized to transfer funds from one office to another, but must make a report of that at the next meeting. Recently, we did authorize a transfer of thirty-seven-hundred dollars from the Office of Registered Deeds to the Emergency Communications Department, or ECOM. I'm going to call on Mr. Jackson to explain how those funds were utilized.
Good evening, and thank you, Mr. Mashburn. Just so the board will know, those funds are transferred so that Emergency Communications will be able to enhance the surveillance system around the Hall of Justice Annex and also in the Registered Deeds Office. There is some combined networking, hardware, et cetera, between the two offices, and I think that it was a very good collaboration between the two departments to be able to do that, and it'll help add another level of security for that area. So, that's what it was used for.
Okay. Thanks, sir. Anything else, Mr. Mashburn?
No, sir. Again, just thank you very much for the opportunity to serve with you for the twenty-three years that I've been here. It's been a great, it's been a great experience for me and one that I will always cherish, and thank you very much for that opportunity.
Yes, sir. Are there any board members who would like to address Mr. Mashburn at this point?
I'll just tell you, Joel, when I tell you, you're a pretty good old guy after all. You know, when I first came on the board, I didn't know what to expect from me, but ever since I have met you for the first day, I have been impressed with your knowledge, your fairness with everyone, and the board members that chose you, I really need to thank them because they made a good choice, and I'm just hoping you're going to stay right here in Iredell County and retire here, so...
Definitely my plans.
All right. Well, you're a fine gentleman, and I'll tell you what, you've got some big shoes to fill, and we've got a man that's going to do a good job, but we're counting on you coming to help when we need you.
I thank you.
If I, if I could, I wish you weren't leaving on this night. You know, this was, this was a tough night, and... So...
It is the bright side of the tough night.
Yeah. Yeah, we're on the downhill side. I'd just like to say a few things to you and also to the people sitting out in the audience and hopefully the folks that are watching this on television. There's some things that I think stood out about Joel Mashburn that made him different. I mean, he stayed in this county a long time. You just don't see that in county managers. Other counties fly through managers, always conflict, always turmoil, and we didn't have to go through that. And I would say that that had more to do with the man sitting to my right than for the past twenty-plus years, the folks who occupied these seats and to the left. Some of the things that I thought made him different and better was I was amazed at how good he is at picking talent. Now, I will tell you, when I, the first time I ever got into a position where I hired people, I thought, man, I'm going to hire really good people, and I'm going to, I'm going to be a lot better at it than the other folks. And I realized that being able to pick talent and hire them is a lot easier said than done. And one of the things that I was surprised at, and I've, and I mentioned this in some of our discussions, I remember sitting on the other side of the rail and having a stereotype in my mind about what county government would be and what county government employees would be like. And one of the things that was different and better than I expected was what I found was the leadership team that he has assembled running his departments, the leadership team one level below that getting groomed to come up, they're good, and that's not easy to do, and that doesn't just happen. And the ability to spot talent is something that very few people have, and when you've got somebody who can spot talent, you don't let them go. He was worth every penny for that reason alone. Next is, we are a governing board, but he ran the county on a daily basis. A lot of times, people would call us up and say, you need to fire somebody, or you need to go tell somebody to do this. We don't run the county on a daily basis. He does. And I will tell you that he sought our guidance because he would ask, what is the pleasure of the board? What is it that you want me to do? And he implemented our policy, and not once did we ever, I've only been here six years, but I've been involved in the political process for longer than that, not once have I ever heard where county commissioner said, you know, we told him to do this, and he did something different. Not once. And that, and you know he disagreed with this board at some point in time, yet he did what a good manager does, which is he implements the desires of the board, and he did it well. Now, on the flip side of that coin, he also has this thing that most people don't see, but we do it, which is on things that we vote on, he makes a recommendation. Is this a good thing to do or not a good thing to do? And especially during the budget workshops, he would, he would give us his opinion on what we could do or maybe not do, what was realistic, what we had to do that maybe we weren't aware of. So, even though he worked for us, he was very much a counselor and advisor, and let me tell you, this board, because I've heard us all say it before, you know, Joel, Joel said that, that he recommended it, and when he said this was a good thing to do, that carried a lot of weight, and it carried a lot of weight because we respect you. Joel Mashburn's a professional. As mad as we would get at each other sometimes, just over the past six years, over controversial things, which most of those were zoning, but Joel Mashburn always conducted himself in a professional manner, and his, everything from his appearance, which I hope comes from your army days there, Joel, but he, he always conducted himself as a professional. Our low tax rate is due in part because you've had commissioners that said, we want to have a low tax rate, but it's also due to the fact that the, that the managing philosophy and the leadership that came from Joel Mashburn was that the departments are going to run an efficient operation. They were going to do their job, but they weren't going to waste money, and they weren't going to grow just because we could. And make no mistake, a lot of that, this, the low tax rate that we enjoy and the fact that we're, we're getting through this crisis a lot better than a lot of other counties is due to the leadership, not that you just demonstrated this year, but in years past. And the last thing I'm going to wrap up with is, you know, a lot of times, folks want to get out while the going's good, and when Mr. Mashburn said he would hang in for this budget, he knew that he wasn't going to go out on a good night. He was going to go out on a difficult night, but he didn't shy away from that. He knew it would be easy to, to leave a year early and maybe leave Ron Smith, the incoming manager, to do the heavy lifting. He could have left on a budget where he was the good guy and put the next county manager in a position to be the bad guy. And he could have done that, but he didn't. He stayed, and he did what was right, knowing it was going to be difficult, and that took courage. And I admire you for that. The etched in stone on the walls of West Point is part of the cadet prayer that says, God let me take the harder right than the easier wrong. Thank you for staying this one additional year.
Anyone else?
Yes, Johnson?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Mashburn, we do appreciate all you've done and, you know, your professionalism. I've been with you here for nine years now, and you've done a good job the whole time. But not only do we appreciate you, we want you to tell your wife, we appreciate her. Because we know she carried that bag a long time, too, keeping up with you, so thank her, too.
Thank you.
I'd like to say a few things. In a leadership role, there are several indispensable attributes. You cannot have an effective leader without them. The first, naturally, is character. A person of character will tell you the truth when you don't want to hear the truth. Joel Mashburn will tell you the truth when it's real ugly, and he won't hide the truth from you. He has that character. I believe that character, in talking to him in private moments, I believe that character comes from his faith, and there's no surer foundation of true character than faith, and he is a man of faith. I admire him for that, but he also has judgment. He can make the best of a terrible situation. And he make, and Ken's right, he does pick out good talent, but as Rudyard Kipling said, if you can keep your wits about you and all, if you can keep your wits about you and all those around you are losing theirs, and Joel had that judgment, he could do that. There's a third quality, though, that's much more difficult to define. It's a quality I've said before, you, you cannot define it, but you know it when you see it, and it's presence. I know some people in this room who have presence, but I can't really define it. But there's people who have a presence, and you know they're there, and you wish they would go away. But then there are people who have presence, and you're glad they're there. They're not going to blame someone else. They're not going to try to throw their own failings off on someone else. They're going to assume responsibility. They're not going to sit there and whine and say, what if? They're going to say, what now? And they're going to immediately begin to develop a strategy, and that presence is something, the recognition of it is, it's a talent, but it's a talent that's developed over time. And it is impossible to have presence without character. Joel Mashburn has presence. If he came into a room in a difficult situation, you knew he was going to display good judgment, and you knew he was in the room, even if the lights were off. He just has presence. Joel knew his role. He knew his, his job was to propose, and the job of this board was to dispose. He would never become embroiled in board politics, or party politics, or local politics, or referee between feuding parties. He would never do that. But if you ask him for his opinion, he would give it to you, even when it wasn't necessarily what you wanted to hear. That's character. So, those are some of the attributes that I came to and admired in Joel, and I came to appreciate. And that's why I said at the beginning of this meeting, I'm a better man for knowing him. I learned a lot from him. I learned how to think through problems better, which leads me to another attribute, and that is wisdom. The Lord said, if you lack wisdom, ask of me, and I will give you freely. I cannot believe that Joel Mashburn has not uttered that fool's prayer many times seeking wisdom, and it was given to him. Joel, we love you, and we're going to miss you terribly, and we pray God's blessing on you and your family many years in your retirement. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay, motion from Mr. Mitchell for adjournment. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. I'm going to go home and read about it.